Good to go.
All right. So I'll open the, are we being recorded now? Elijah? Good. All right, so I'll open the planning board meeting for July 1st, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded, and within 48 hours, we'll post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or the town's social media page. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, Raymond Dejamian, Gene Guarino, Stephen Geller, and Michael McDonald hopefully will join us at some point. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Jennifer Burke, who's the Community and Economic Development Director, Elijah Romulus, the Assistant Town Planner, Azu Antonero, the Town Engineer, and Leslie Do, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and any items and items will appear on the agenda, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address in your question. The chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature on the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So we have a public hearing at 6:30 PM. Two public hearings. The first one is the town of Bridgewater zoning ordinance, the town of Bridgewater. This is a notice for the council's withdrawal of ordinance, FY 20007 zoning ordinance, adoption of classified zoning ordinances. So I'll turn this over to either Mr. Romulus or Ms. Burke, and give us an update on how we should act.
Yes, so the town council clerk and Holmberg sends us the following email, which was, which is up, shared right now. Basically, the town unanimously, the council unanimously voted to withdraw the ordinance. And I guess that's, that's.
So what are our, what are our options? Just to take no action, to just move on?
Well, you have, you have an open public hearing, so the board should close the public hearing, and then that will close out the board's responsibility at this time. You can close the public hearing and take no action.
So we should have a motion to close the public hearing and then a motion to take no action?
We don't really need a motion to take no action, but if that makes you comfortable, that's fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So by Ray, do a second?
I'll second.
By Jane? Any discussion? So Michael's not on yet, is he?
No.
So Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Is Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. If we can either end it there after the board feels comfortable taking a vote or making a motion.
Is anybody talking right now, Elijah? I can't hear you. I can't hear anything.
You're muted, Azu.
Yes. I'll message you in the chat, Azu.
All right, so are we good with just closing the public hearing, or would somebody like to make a motion to take more action? Okay. All right, so we're good with that? All right. So if the board's okay, we have a lengthy public hearing, most likely on 500 South Street. We have two items, Firefly Lane and a Form A on Walnut Street. Is everybody okay with taking those out of order?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the first item we have is Firefly Lane, Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. This is a lot release request requesting a release of one lot for a model home. Excuse me, Lot One, not One Lot.
Yes, so we got a request from Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. to have a lot release for the model home on Firefly Lane, Lot One. We have had this request several times in the past, and we accordingly draft a covenant for such a request. The department sees no, no issues with issuing the release.
But I believe, I believe we, in the past, and maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but we issue, we say no occupancy until the road bond is in place. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So that should be a condition. So do we have a motion on the Lot One, Lot Release Request for a Model Home?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Steve? Just any discussion?
Could somebody refresh my memory? How many lots are in that subdivision?
So four lot subdivision, and they're all duplexes, I believe.
Sorry, I was trying to aid Azu with the audio. So I would have to look, but I believe there was, I would agree with.
So just, I would, I know we have a motion and a second, but I think that we should add the condition that we have in the past that, you know, no, that the, no occupancy permit shall be granted until the bond is put in place.
I'll revise my motion to that extent.
Mr. Geller, do you want to revise this? Any more discussion? We'll call again, right? So I have Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
I'm a yes, okay. All right, moving on, we have a A and R plan, a Form A, request to reconfigure maps 51, parcels 22 and 58 into lots two and Lot One. Mr. Romulus, can you pull that up on the screen? Is there anybody here from Michael J. Cosgrove Associates or applicants representing this?
I do not see anyone in particular out of the participants. There are a few telephone numbers. I don't think the applicant is here.
Do you want to give a brief description of what's going on?
Yes, so basically, it's reconfiguring the two lots for shifting pretty much the, a small corner of the parcel. Looks like prior to that, it was extending over in existing sheds, so they've, you know, tucked in the parcel on one end to then push it out. They keep the same square footage, and they have the same frontage as well. So since the frontage was a, you know, pre-existing, there are no issues with the A and R plan as proposed.
Well, they have 168 feet at the front anyway, right?
So there's 100 and...
30.
37 on one end, and then 173 on the other.
Okay. And staff, is staff and engineering's okay with this?
Yes.
Any board questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Do we have a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Do we have a second?
Second.
By Steve. So a motion by Jane, second by Steve. Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
I'm a yes, okay. All right, so that takes care of the smaller items we had on the agenda. So we can go back to 500 South Street. This is an application by Derek Swenson for the George H. Mitchell Elementary School. This is a major site plan. This is construction of the new George H. Mitchell Elementary School, map 62, Lot 19. So I imagine Mr. Romulus, unless this was advertised?
Yes, it was.
And do, do we have the certifications of the abutted notices?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do we want to unmute the project team? And then Mr. Romulus, do you mind reading in the public hearing notice?
Yes, let me.
And just while Mr. Romulus is looking for that, I'll just explain how the public hearing process is going to work. So Mr. Romulus will read in the public hearing notice. We'll then turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation. The board can then ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the public or any public that are on, on the meeting that would like to ask questions. We just ask you again to state your name and address for the record. Just for full disclosure, I am on the school building committee. And if anybody has any objection, I'll, I'll participate, but I can let Ray, the vice chairman, run the meeting. If not, I'll just, you know, I'll continue to run the meeting. So with that being said, if Mr. Romulus could read that public hearing notice, huh?
Yes, on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020, at 6:30 PM, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing on application by Derek Swenson for site plan approval for the construction of the new George H. Mitchell Elementary School to be located at 500 South Street. The public hearing will be held as a virtual meeting over Zoom. A link and instructions to participate in the meeting will be posted to the calendar on the town's website at www.bridgewaterma.org. Copies of the plans may be requested by emailing ced@bridgewaterma.org. A recording of the meeting will be, will also be posted to the town's website within 48 hours after meeting ends. All interested parties are encouraged to attend, and that is the hearing notice. Also, just a, just notice that Michael McDonald did just enter the meeting.
Great. Okay, so, and we, we do know that abuttes have been notified. We confirm that, Ms. Do?
Yes, yes, Mr. Driscoll.
Right. And then why don't we turn it over to the project team then for their presentation?
Hello, my name's Gene Raymond from Raymond Design Associates, and Elijah's, we're gonna, there's gonna be three of us presenting tonight, so there's Dustin TLA would get unmuted at some point, and Jeff Pilott from Samyotis, if you don't mind. First of all...
Gene, do you want, do you want board members to ask questions as you go along, or when you're done with your presentation? How do you want to handle it?
What we've done is we've taken a fairly, I guess, lengthy presentation, because there's a lot to cover, but Patrick, we've put, we put slides in between every subject. We take a pause. So for instance, if we're covering traffic, we'd like to take questions about traffic before we move on to the next, so people don't lose track. So the first thing I wanted to do was thank everybody for meeting tonight, because I understand that, you know, the July 4th week is typically one where you don't have a planning board meeting. So I know everyone on the school building committee and the project team appreciates you fitting this in, because we obviously want to see the, the project progress on, on time and on schedule. So I wanted to thank you for that. So I guess what I'll do is just say, move the slide, or next slide?
Yeah, next slide.
So what we wanted to cover tonight is give you a quick overview of the project, and then I'd like to do a quick overview of the traffic, the neighborhood traffic, and then also the circulation, the traffic on the site. Then we'd like to turn it over to Dustin Powell, who's with Traverse Landscape Architects, and he wants to go through some of the planning on the site and the landscape in particular. And then Jeff Pilott would like to go through all the utilities, the civil design, stormwater management, and then I would close up with the site lighting, and also kind of the massing and materials of the building that the school building committee is, is looking at. So that I, I'm gonna go through at a fairly brisk pace, knowing that there's a lot of slides, and also that we can come back to any of these slides at any time. So I guess, next slide, Elijah. Just to orient people, the new project is going to be on the site of the existing Mitchell School, which was, has been closed since 2015. The way the existing site is set up is that there was a single entrance off of South Street, and then there were buses and parent drop-off and parking, all kind of on the left side of the existing building. And it was a real, you know, when we got on the project, it was a real mess as far as site circulation. So we spent a long time and a lot of effort, and I think we've really cleaned it up quite well. Behind the school, you'll see that there's some play area on asphalt, and then to the far right, there's an existing playing field. And above the one on the right, there's another kind of baseball-shaped field up above that. Those two fields are staying, and we propose having kind of two vehicular ways out of the site, which I'll show you in a future slide in order to, to kind of repair some of that or make it better, the site circulation. But we are still keeping the existing entrance off of South Street. So next slide. This is a very rough diagram, but I wanted to orient everybody. The existing Mitchell School is outlined in those red dashes with the gray, the gray color. Then the new Mitchell is going to be a two-story school on the left side and three on the right. It's going to have a smaller footprint, and we've shown it kind of with that overlay of greenish-yellow. And the slight, the slope, which you may or may not know, it slopes from South Street back toward Bedford Street. And so where you see 32 feet, that's the height of the building along South Street, which is under the zoning bylaw, which, which allows up to 35 feet. And then on the backside, it's 46 feet. And last week, we were successful in securing a height variance from the zoning board of appeals. We could go to the next slide, Elijah. This is a site plan kind of overlaid on a photograph, and there's a lot of colored lines and, you know, on it, so I apologize, we have some diagrams. But what we've done is shown the L-shaped building. It's in white, and you can see classrooms and hallways. All the gray is parking lots and roads on the site. The, the idea is that we tried to separate the, the parent drop-off and pickup, so we've shown that kind of with a squiggly yellow line coming in off South Street, and then wrapping around up toward the front door where there's a little red arrow kind of in the, in the, in between the two wings. What, by, by wrapping through the site, we want to pull a queue of cars off of South Street and have any lineup cars be on the site itself. The squiggly red arrow that, or line that goes kind of up beyond and above the school is where buses will come in, and we're going to show you that we have kind of a separate bus entrance on South Street and a separate parent entrance. But the unique thing about this is the buses will have their own lane to get to the, to the far right side of the school, so they'll all be queued up on the site also, no backup, separated from the parents, and then so that they don't exit back onto South Street and, and kind of have a lot of congestion with the cars trying to get back out. There is going to be a new two-way, a new one-way road extension that's going to run from the back of the site out past the senior center to Route 18. That is going to be for buses only. It's only going to be at arrival and dismissal for, I don't know, 20 minutes or whatever it is. We've taken care to meet with the seniors and to kind of formalize more of a road around the senior center, instead of, right now, it's just kind of a wide-open parking area. The other, the reason that we're sending buses out there is that the district, you know, controls the buses, and they will have instructions to only take a right turn onto Route 18. So we've gone through this with the public safety folks. Clearly, none of us nor them wanted buses to come out and try to take a left turn, and they definitely didn't want parents coming out and trying to take either a left or a right. So you'll see in a slide later that everyone's, you know, the buses are going to take a right, and that's, that's deemed the safest way to accomplish this. We can go to the next slide, Elijah. So this is a rendering that was shown, you know, it was developed early in the project. I'm just putting it here again as orientation purposes. This went to town meeting, but coming into the site, and you know, if you took a bird's eye view, you're up in the air looking down. The yellow horizontal windows are where the main office and is, and then there's a wing on the left and a wing on the right, and they're separated by that kind of two-story glass, glass entry. So this part on the light, on the left, is facing South Street, and that's the part that's under the maximum height limit of the zoning ordinance. You can go to the next slide, Elijah. So these are the diagrams. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but it's, this is what we presented to the ZBA, and they unanimously approved the 46-foot height to the right side on the top rendering. And the 32 feet to the left side of the top rendering is what I had just showed you in that previous, previous view. So Elijah, there's another, another slide with the same thing, and we can probably just roll through that. These just happen to be the other two sides of the school. So I don't know if anyone, we can take a pause if anyone has any questions about kind of the project overview.
I have a couple. First of all, can somebody just refresh my memory of the school, as for what grades?
It's going to be pre-K to grade two.
That's what I thought.
And the, it's going to actually have, the, the previous school was pre-K to three.
Right.
There's actually going to be one less grade and some few more pre-K students, but less students overall on the site.
What are the playfields for, if it's going just for the second grade?
It's for, really for recess. So there are a couple playgrounds that have, you know, play equipment, swing sets, things like that, but the existing play, playfields are there for recess and actually physical education in the spring and fall.
Great. On the busing and cars, when you enter from South Street, are buses and cars using the same lane, or are there going to be separate lanes?
I'll show you a diagram of that, but they will use separate lanes. So be a one-way in for buses, and then an in with two lanes going out for cars.
That's fine.
But I'll show you that diagram.
Sorry, the, the other, last question I have on that is that they're saying that buses are exiting to 18, they have to turn right onto 18.
Correct.
It seems to me that those buses, in order to get the drop-off for kids, is going to have to make a circuit back around to South Street to, to start depositing kids. It seems to me a lengthy way to exit the school, an awkward way, in fact.
Right, so we looked at a number of ways, and, and we actually had a traffic study done, so I will go through the, the highlights of that study and show you the extent of the study. And really, for the reasons of separating cars and buses and not having a lot of backup and a lot of kind of crisscrossing on the site, everyone involved, including the public safety people and school people, felt that it was better to separate the exiting. The cars would go back to South Street, and the buses would go out onto Route 18.
But in effect, they would also end up back on South Street, would they not?
Well, some would, and, you know, some are gonna just, you know, go to, go to one part of the, the town, and then anyone who has to come back up toward the center of town, I imagine they will come back up South Street.
Well, I don't know, it just seemed awkward to me. Anyway, I'm done.
I can, I can go on to the next subject if people, and we can come back to any of these, obviously, at the end. I guess, Elijah, we can go to the next slide. So this happens to be the traffic study. This first slide is the locus of the study, and in the upper left, they, they, they started by observing the traffic at the existing Mitchell at the middle, up on Mount Prospect Street. They wanted to get a sense for what the queuing was, what the busing was, et cetera, et cetera. But then the site is down in the middle of the, of the aerial photo, and so they obviously looked at the driveway to the left, which went out to South Street. They looked at Wally Kruger Way, where it intersects Bedford Street. They went up toward the center of town and looked at the South Street and Crescent Street intersection, and then to your point, for the buses that exit onto Route 18 and take a right, they're going to come back up towards South Street if they need to head that way. So they took a look at the South and Winter Street intersection. And on the next slide, Elijah, there are the conclusions right out of the traffic study. Probably because the existing school is there, and it actually had more, more pupils and therefore parents, the, the levels of service at the surrounding intersections, all the one I just went through, will remain virtually unchanged. At the afternoon school dismissal, the West Brown approach to South from Winter will rise from a level of Service E to a level of Surface F. So they're, really, their only big recommendation was to monitor this, but they didn't think that there was any traffic signals warranted at that intersection. They felt that there was adequate safe stopping distance for traffic on, using the site. They did, another recommendation was that the site distance to the north of the South Street driveway could be improved by trimming or some, removing some trees, but it wasn't a, I mean, it was kind of a recommendation to look at. They didn't think any roadway modifications would be required at Route 18 and Wally Kruger because of the right turn only, and because it's not parents who really the school department can't control, so it was important that it was just buses. Uh, so it was important that it was just buses. And they didn't see any reduction in safety on all those, uh, roadways and, and, uh, intersections. So, uh, I think if we go to the next slide, I can take you through maybe a little clearer picture, um, of the, um, onsite circulation. So the new school is in the, you know, same position it was last time. You can see the yellow, um, the yellow kind of path of travel with some arrows showing buses coming in and looping around to the left of the first parking lot. Now, right where the cursor is at the end of the building, um, if you came back up, 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 up the yellow right there. That's where the buses are going to stop, right where the Y is for the K2 play area. Um, and that's, so the buses will kind of queue along the back of the building. They will, uh, either pick up or, uh, discharge or, uh, yeah, discharge children at the right-hand side of the school. And then they will continue out to the right to Wally Kruger Way. Uh, meanwhile, the parents are the red line. And as I had mentioned before, they're going to come in from South Street and they're going to loop through the parking lot so that we can get the queue off South Street. And right when they get there, they're at the front entrance of the school. So that's where they'll be dropping off. And then they will simply continue forward and go back out towards South Street. The next slide, I believe, is going to show the South Street enlargement. Um, on the right-hand side here, you can see, uh, the yellow arrow kind of pointing toward the right. That is a, um, sep- that's the separate bus lane, which is one-way coming in off of South Street. And then the blue arrows, there's one pointing to the right where parents will enter. And then there are two lanes, there's a left turn only and a right turn, uh, lane, uh, going back out onto South Street. The, the driveway is going to be, um, widened. Uh, we showed some dashed lines kind of running left to right with a, an arrow showing the width of the existing driveway. Uh, but then the, the boulder arrow and the boulder dash lines are showing, uh, where the, the new drives are going to be. Um, if you go to the right, uh, the left Elijah, um, this is the same diagram, except the other part is, um, there are special, uh, special Ed vans, which we've shown in blue on the left side of the building. And they'll have a separate drop-off and pickup, uh, spot near the front door. Uh, so they will come in from South Street, um, and, and, you know, do the drop-off and pickup. And then they'll, they'll loop around the back of the building where the red bus queue is. Uh, and then kind of down in the lower right, you can see that the blue squiggled line, uh, heads toward, back towards South Street. So the idea is that the vans and the parents are all going back towards South Street. The buses are going toward, uh, Route 18. And what I want to say is the vans come at a different time. They come between eight-ten and eight-thirty. Uh, and the buses, even though they're using the same kind of, uh, path on the site, the buses are not coming until 15 minutes later. So that was very specifically thought through. You can go to the next slide, uh, Elijah. I think what the next slide is going to show you is just the afternoon pickup. So, um, it's pretty much the same thing. But we do have the pre-K van showing up at 2:30. Uh, the bus is showing up at 3:10. The parents also showing up at 3:10, but again, the parents and buses are separated. And then at the end of the day, between 3:30 and six, there's a before and after-school program. Um, so that really doesn't connect with any of the other, um, uses. I think that's it for traffic and site circulation. If you go to the next slide, uh, we can pause and just see if there are any questions about it.
Could you, do you have a blow up of, do you, do you plan on doing anything at the entrance? I mean, at the exit way where the buses are exiting on Route 18?
Uh, we don't, there's, uh, then, I can't swear to it, but I assume that there's an existing stop sign, uh, Steve. But there is, um, really we're resurfacing the road, but we're staying out of the state highway right away. So we're really not going up, you know, fully to Route 18.
I guess one concern would be is who's, who's going to, lack for better term, police than all the buses are going to take a right-hand turn? You're not going to get a bus driver that's going to want to take a left?
Well, I think they're counting on, um, you know, the school department having control because they're contracted to the school department. So I think the first time there's a left turn, I think that's going to be a major issue for the bus company.
Okay. I, I didn't know if there would be any type of, you know, island that would be put in to force you to basically, you know, basically go to the right a little bit. But then everybody would have to take a right-hand turn, not a left.
Yeah, we were very cognizant about, um, and we had a lot of communication with the senior center. Cause as you can imagine, they were a little bit hesitant about, you know, this happening. So again, we did formalize kind of the road and the entrances into and out of the senior center, you know, with curbing. And we also have some traffic tables and, um, uh, there will be a gate also, I should have mentioned that. But over by, um, kind of on the far side of the senior center, uh, there will be a gate that will be remotely operated by the school. Uh, because everyone wants to make sure that there's no cut-through traffic, you know, people trying to, wha- whatever, go through the school and they don't have any business at the school.
Okay. Well, you answered that question before I asked it.
Oh.
Well, people cut, cutting through from one to the other.
Yeah, pure luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me, did, are you finished, Steve?
Yep, um, yeah, I am for now.
Okay, good, good. You say you're, they're repaving the entrance to the senior center?
Um, we're not paving on the senior center site, but we're swinging the Wally Kruger Drive kind of around the senior center, um, which you can see in the civil drawings when Jeff gets to them. And we're, um, putting some curbing so that there'll be kind of a more formalized entrance into the parking lot and a more formalized exit.
But the road, the road going from 18 into the senior center and thus the exit for the buses is going to stay the same width?
Um, it is going to be resurfaced. We're not doing any regrading, we're not doing any curbing, any drainage. We're just going to-
Staying the same width, though?
Yes, and just resurfacing, yep. Um, does anyone have any other questions? Uh, and again, we can come back to any of this anytime.
I got one more question. It was one that it's pre-K through, through grade two. So what's the amount of students in this facility?
Um, it's 740, um, K2. And the reason we break that out is because they're full-time pupils.
Yep.
And, and then the pre-K, um, will vary, but it could be up to 240 kids. But it would be split between a morning session and an afternoon session. So maybe 1:30 and 1:30. Or 1:20 and 1:20, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, I would be happy to stop talking and turn it over to Dustin Powell, who's our, with our landscape architect. And he could go through the, the landscaping as it relates to the, um, the zoning bylaw.
Thanks, Jean. Um, so as Jean's kind of been alluding to, uh, the way we've laid out the design, we've really tried to emphasize, uh, safety in terms of the circulation for the vehicles and the pedestrians is one of the main points. Um, we've positioned all the play areas very close to the building to again, tuck them away from all of that circulation, uh, provide further protection. Um, we've made use of the existing slope, uh, onsite, uh, and tiered those, uh, play areas down with the building. Working in that serpentine motion through the area from that, um, uh, finished floor height to the 14 feet, uh, for the, uh, lower level. Um, we've dispersed parking along the entire site for the most part, uh, to, um, again, to the north, the south and to the west, uh, not so much to the east, uh, to, uh, split it up so that it's less of a gigantic, uh, parking sprawling lot throughout. Um, we've also done our best to, um, work within, uh, the, uh, town requirements while, um, allowing for, um, an efficient removal, uh, of the snow. Uh, uh, I think we can go on to the next one. Please. Um, materials have been chosen, uh, uh, for the site uh, and the play areas, uh, to really kind of play out the context of the streams of wetlands, uh, present onsite and also, uh, taking advantage of the, uh, fields and meadows elsewhere throughout the town. Um, right here, you can see this is our materials plan, just kind of a broad, um, construction image of what was in the previous rendering up above. Uh, yep, next one, please. Uh, here's the planting plan. As you can see, we have a, um, large assortment of shade trees, shrubs, uh, evergreens, uh, present onsite to create, uh, shading, uh, soften the scale of the building. Also, um, soften those parking areas. All the trees that we're calling for are a minimum two and a half caliper. Um, also within, uh, their quests, uh, of the, uh, codes. Um, I think that should be good for this one as well. We want to go to the next side. So here's just, um, kind of a assortment. These aren't all the plants that we're proposing, but this is just kind of give you an idea of the kind of stuff that we're, uh, proposing for this, uh, large dis- or, um, large seduous shade trees for again, softening and shading the areas. Uh, as well as some nice ornamental, uh, flowering trees. Um, and, uh, upright evergreens to kind of create, um, screening buffers in certain areas. Uh, and help, uh, create a little more, uh, blockage between, uh, the drive aisles and where the kids will be playing. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and again, this isn't all the plants that we're using, but this is just kind of a, uh, assortment of some of the understory plantings that we're going, uh, that we're planning to use. Um, wide variety of, uh, natives and ornamentals, um, just, um, yeah, nice assortment of flowering and non-flowerings. Yeah, I think that was our last slide. Does anyone have any questions?
Existing P. I'm, I'm reading one. It says, "Have tree selections been optimized for carbon sequestration?" I think.
Um, I honestly do not know that term. So I'm going to say that, must, uh, it, it can be worded to me. Otherwise, I'm not sure of that one.
I imagine the gist is that you're using all native plants, right?
Oh, um, yes, uh, as much as possible, yes, we're planning to use, uh, native plants for the most part.
And I think that, I think the thought was that it's, um, you know, the trees suck up and, and deposit carbon into the ground through their root system, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that you, uh, frankly, were asked to do that. But I don't know the answer to the question either.
How about deer-resistant trees? Have you considered that?
Yeah, we have been told that there is a deer problem onsite. So, uh, yes, for the most part, we will be, or as, as, to the extent possible, we will be using deer-resistant plants. Um, I'll have to run through again to make sure that what we are proposing is deer-resistant. But yes, the intent is to, uh, use deer-resistant trees.
Why do you say to the extent possible? Why can't you just flat out put up deer-resistant trees?
Uh, sorry, that, I just misspoke. Yes, to, we, we will be trying to use, or we will be using, uh, deer-resistant trees. Um, Chris from my office is also here. Um, she's muted now, but she, i- if she can be unmuted, it looks like she might be able to add some notes.
Uh, it doesn't look, look like her audio is connected. See if I can, I'll see if I can merge audio.
So what, while you're, while you're trying to merge her audio, can, can I just ask the question? I haven't had a chance to really go through your print, your plant list and everything. But can I assume that you're going, that none of those are poisonous plants?
Yes.
And, and a lot of them, and I haven't had a chance to look inside your playgrounds, but I'm assuming that a lot of your playgrounds will not have plants and trees that will drop anything to be a choking hazard? Those kids like to put things in their mouths?
Uh, yes, uh, for the most part, the, uh, upper area, um, has the large majority of the plantings. Uh, and the, um, lower area where the playing is actually happening is going to be mostly, uh, shade trees just to provide, uh, a little relief from the sun for the kids playing.
Is there, uh, are you going to be presenting a blow-up of the play areas tonight?
Uh, I was not.
Okay.
You could go back to your, uh, plan though, and Elijah could blow it up if, uh, if that's of interest. Go back to the first slide and landscape.
Yeah, it's, it's probably really hot this week. I don't know if we're going to get in that far.
I can pull it up on the actual plant set.
If you went to the colored one, Elijah, it, it might be easier to read. Right there.
Is it possible that you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you, Chris.
Oh, great, okay. I did try to respond on the chat group on the carbon, uh, the native, the native trees that we're specifying, once they grow and get, get to the canopy size that, um, they ultimately will be, they'll, they'll all contribute to carbon storage for sure. We have not done an estimated, um, calculation on that, no.
Another question that I, that I have with all this, with all this planting that's being proposed, is there going to be a, uh, is there an irrigation being put in and everything else to keep this alive or?
Um, this is a lead project, so in order to meet the lead points, we're, um, developing the plant palette to be as drought-resistant as possible. Um, we're allowed to, we're allowed to, um, make sure that it's watered and maintained, um, by the contractor to the specification. And locate hose bibs throughout the site around the building as needed. Um, but the intent is in order to meet the lead credits, we would not be providing irrigation.
So, all right, I, I know it's probably not in, in our jurisdiction, but you, you're telling me that the contractor is going to, you know, water it and keep it going. But who, who's going to take care of it after that? I mean, they're not going to do it forever for the, they're going to watch you for a year.
They're required, uh, to maintain the landscape, uh, until final acceptance, which in our specifications is typically a year after planting. And then after that, the town would be responsible for maintaining. Similar to the landscape that's out there today, once it's established, um, being native planting and, uh, hardy planting, the intent is it should be able to withstand, um, you know, typical seasonal conditions in this New England environment.
But not to withstand children running over and traveling?
Yes, uh, so we do have, um, specific fencing in place so that, um, we can- we can protect certain areas like the hillside area. We don't anticipate that kids would be running around on the hillside area that's heavily planted because we also added a fence to keep them down on the playground area. We also wanted to give them a little bit of open space within that playground area, which would have a few shade trees and lawn. So yes, we do anticipate that there'll be a lot of running around in those areas.
And not, I don't want to interrupt, but just to clarify, I believe the maintenance of the property would be the district's responsibility, not the town's responsibility.
Yeah, so what we typically would do, sorry, during the design process, we would, we have been talking to the district and the DPW in various meetings, talking about maintenance and snow removal, et cetera, and we've attempted to simplify the design as much as possible for future maintenance. We will provide at the end of the project a maintenance manual, which will outline kind of general seasonal anticipated maintenance practices. That probably is not much unlike what they would do today. We try to keep, you know, the plant beds kind of close to the school and really specific areas. Obviously, there's a 14 foot slope between the front door and this playground, so we're planting it. We're not providing a lawn that has to be mowed. Our hope is that the shrub, the native shrub massing will take over and just be allowed to grow naturally to take over that slope. We don't want anyone having to get in there and mow those slopes.
Can I just ask for some reason, is there a reason why we're building this lead?
The, the MSBA, which is the state agency funding a good portion of this, this project requires that the project meet two, well, calm green design standards. One being lead and one being collaborative for high performing schools. And the, the, our recommendation was to follow the lead and, but they're both pretty much the same thing.
Correct. So are we going for, and I'm probably off base on this whole conversation towards what we, for example, but are we going for just lead certified or you go for anything higher?
The district was able to secure an extra 2% of reimbursement on the project from the state. And in order to do that, this is going to be a long answer, but you have to do two things. You have to be at least certified. And right now, we're either going to be certified, but we're at the high end and we might end up at silver. And then you also have to beat the lead standards for energy use, which by 16% minimum. And I believe we're beating it by 28 or 29%.
All right. Thank you.
So I think, I think Elijah put up one of the playgrounds. I don't know if you, Steve, want to go through it or not, or you're, you're all set.
I'm all set. It just looks like you're going towards a natural playing environment. I was just looking at the.
Just, just a general question before you go on, regarding the plantings again, I take it you've done this before in other school districts?
Yes.
And how, how have the plantings worked over, say, a year or two?
I guess honestly, it just depends on each district's maintenance programs and we try to, we tried to work within the district's needs while trying to promote native landscaping and reduction in mowing generally. So it's just a matter of continuing to work with Bridgewater to make sure that we're meeting the needs of, of the district and the town.
No, what I'm saying.
I would say that.
My question though, it's whether you're working the past and your plantings in the past have, have gone beyond a year or two without problems.
Yeah, so the plant, the plant species that we're picking are the ones that clearly we've seen on past projects that have, that have flourished for sure. In other words, here's a clear example, you know, oak leaf hydrangea or you know, red twig dogwood, those always seem to do well on projects with limited maintenance. So we tend to include those in plant matings where we need them. So that's just one example.
Can you go back one page? I'm just curious. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
I believe there was a question in the chat regarding.
Yeah, so actually, that's a good point, right? So we have, why are we here? Do we want to address those seven questions in the chat? Just then we can continue?
Be a good idea.
Okay, so what I'm seeing is from Carol, what is happening to the ditch behind existing building? Jeff did answer that. Hi, Carol, the ditch slash intermittent stream is to remain. But what is, let's see. Another one, Wally Kruger is relatively, this is from Carol. Wally Kruger is relatively narrow for two-way traffic, one of which would be a bus. Would it not be safer, especially in poorer or snowy weather, to expand the width of Wally Kruger? Second question, the site plan showed a new two-way road extension from South Street. Where is the entrance from South Street?
So Jean, could you answer the, what the width is of the road going out through Route 18?
Yeah, it's 20, it's 24 feet, so it's two 12-foot lanes.
And that's sufficient for two buses or a bus and a vehicle to pass safely?
Uh, yes.
And is what, the question was about where is the entrance on South Street?
Yeah, I wasn't sure I understood that question. So the.
The entrance is going to be at the same place, just widened, correct?
Yes. So right now, there's a three lane, I, I, three lanes wide. I think it's two out and one in at South Street. But we're, we're going to relocate it further south and then install an island and then have a one-way in bus entrance off of South Street.
And the town has sufficient land to do that, correct?
It does. Yes, we're doing it within the property lines.
Okay, then the next question was, was that Elijah? You want to go to the next one?
I think the only other comment was from Carlton, expanding on the, the trees. There are ways to, there are ways to estimate an optimal CO2 removal. Please do compare trees. It's important from a climate perspective, trees that grow tall over time could defeat the concept of installing solar panels in the future. Per the current design due to shading, please evaluate long-term impact of the planned vegetations.
So Chris here, I just, I would take that back to Jean and the town as to what the long-term planning is for solar panels on the school site.
Do you see any of these streams, Chris, impacting the potential of solar?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. So, but as far, as far as future solar, the, the roof area, again, MSBA requires, and it's, and it's a good thing, that we arrange the roof area and the mechanical equipment up on the roof so that there's a dedicated area for future solar panels. Also, the building code requires, and so of course we're doing it, that the roof structure be capable of supporting a future solar installation. There were no, there are no plans for doing ground mounted solar. To be honest, everything to the South Street side of the intermittent stream is pretty much being used for either, you know, play areas, drives, parking, or the building footprint.
What is the reason for not putting solar up right now?
It's a, but it's a budget reason. So it's, it's called solar ready, you know, the roof structure is there, the area is there. The conduit between the roof and the electric room down on the ground floor is there, but there is, you know, there was no, no funding set aside for putting the actual solar installation.
But aren't there firms that will do it for putting up on their own and then get the electricity?
I think, I think that would be a kind of a school department initiative or a town, town initiative to, you know, solicit those kind of groups and, and, you know, evaluate what they can do.
Looks like there are two more comments. Carol said that I am very concerned as to the ability of senior citizens to navigate Wally Kruger with buses. And the following comment from Carlton, I chair the energy committee and am happy to talk with you relative to this thing.
Great. Getting back to the Wally Kruger, again, the building committee had in themselves, but they had us out to meet at the senior center multiple times before it went to town meeting. I, I guess I need to remind everybody that it's, you know, 15 or 20 minutes in the morning and 15 or 20 minutes in the afternoon. And, and going off memory, I believe that the afternoon dismissal is after, one of them is either before or after the senior center is, is closed. So we did what we could as far as mitigating, you know, slowing down the buses with the, the curve in the road and the signage and the traffic tables.
Speed. Okay, so let's, let's continue the presentation. We can come back to public comment.
Okay, so Elijah, you could probably go to the next, which is, and then we can turn it over to Jeff Pilott, who's a civil engineer on our team. And they were responsible for doing all the, the grading, the conservation commission submissions, stormwater management utilities and layout. So Jeff, I'll let you take it from here. No one can hear you, Jeff. I don't know if you're connected verbally.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So good, good evening, everybody. This plan shows the soil erosion and sediment control plan. As you may know, that there are many environmental resource areas throughout the site. We have the intermittent stream or the ditch to the east of the school and the, the wetlands to the north of the school. So we put this plan together to help protect those resource areas with straw waddle and catch basin filters. So during construction activities, we are minimizing runoff from the areas of disturbance. The erosion control devices will remain in place until all exposed and disturbed areas have been stabilized with vegetation or impervious surfaces. The, the next sheet. Please. We are only resurfacing a majority of the Wally Kruger way up to the senior center here. And this shows the erosion control for that work as well. Not much on this sheet. We can go to the next one, please. As Jean and Dustin mentioned in the site circulation and traffic slides, the main entrance to the school remained from South Street with a driveway looping around to the north of the building for the school buses and emergency safety access and connecting to the senior Wally Kruger way, which is off Bedford Street. There, with the intermittent stream to the east of the school, there is an existing bituminous walk that's being widened to allow vehicular access for the, the drainage purposes. We are putting in a new three-sided culvert below that expanded drive. There are three proposed main parking areas to the north, south, and west of the building in order to accommodate the school parking needs. And we are putting in proposed signage and pavement markings included to provide the, the traffic calming that's required and, and directional flow. We can go to the next sheet. On the very left-hand side of the page, there, that is the location of the, the, the automated gate that will prevent cut-throughs down Wally Kruger way. Those orange areas, which are kind of difficult to see, are speed tables. And that will help with the traffic calming and allow, allow the senior citizen to exit accordingly safely. As we go down towards Wally Kruger way, the dimension of that, the width of that drive is approaching 29 feet. A typical drive aisle, drive lane is about 12 feet, so we have plenty of room as we get out to Bedford Street. We can go to the next sheet, please.
Yeah, let me just exit and bring that back up.
So this plan shows the utilities for the project. The new building will be serviced with the majority of the new utilities coming from South Street. The gas shown in yellow, water in blue, electric in red. And sewer and brown and drainages in green. The water and sewer will tie into existing lines that tie into the, the service lines coming off of Wally Kruger way. They will be reused and ultimately outlet to Bedford Street. If we go to the next sheet, you can see that a little clearer. So a, as we said before, on Wally Kruger way will be just resurfacing and tying in some catch basins for the expanded section of Wally Kruger way, which is out to the west of the senior center. We can go to the next sheet. Can you go back two sheets, sorry? Just want to go through the storm mark real quick. So the proposed stormwater management systems are shown in green. Stormwater runoff is routed into a network of catch basins and drainage structures that go into three main underground stormwater infiltration systems before they outlet to the wetlands via overflow drain lines. A portion of the proposed building roof runoff is also captured into the infiltration systems. With our proposed stormwater management system, we've significantly reduced the peak flow for all the storm events. We meet all the DP standards with our proposed design. We can go to the grading sheet. Working with the, the, the site constraints, the, the environmental resource areas, the natural slope of the land. The proposed grading provides new walkways throughout the site to meet MAAB and ADA regulations. We have accessible paved paths throughout the site. We're including retaining walls around the proposed playground areas and expanded parking areas. And as for grading beyond the school and the senior center, the grading is mostly to be replaced in kind as we're just resurfing, resurfacing in those locations. We have met with conservation commission. They have, they, we are looking to close on the, on the next hearing. We've gone through a review with the town engineer zoo. And we will be providing responses to those comments and addressing those comments. And hopefully to close out on the next year. And that sums it up for me.
So we always, you know, we're again, we're trying to break it up. So if people have any questions about the, the civil engineering on the, on the site, we'd be happy to take them now or later.
Jean, what did we end up with doing for curving throughout the site? Is it, is it vertical granite?
Well, it is vertical.
Everything is vertical granite, Patrick. Though I will say the, the building committee is going to entertain some alternates as part of the bidding package. The reason being is if bids come in high, they need some things to kind of peel back so that they can award the project and still, still maintain the schedule. So there, it had, nothing's been decided, but one of the things that was tossed around was looking at the vertical granite curving and maybe limiting its use and, and getting some Cape Cod berms somewhere on the site. It's not the intention and, and the build, all the estimates show we're on project, on budget with the vertical granite curving. But again, there's some talk about trying to have a safety valve.
Just seems like that's a good investment. It just seems to hold up the best. Mr. Antonero, do you have any comment on that type of curving?
Not really. Granite seems to be, I know the plow in the highway department plows it. And they don't really like the idea of a granite craven. But does provide for especially when it's adjacent to walkways or pedestrians. I would think that a granite raised granite craven would be good.
Yeah.
Just into walkways. Anywhere else, we can put anything else.
Could, could I request, I know you, you said that there will be more discussion once you make replies to Mr. Antonero. But could we just go on record with having Mr. Antonero give his general comments regarding the drainage and so forth? I know we have the memo, but I just.
This is probably, is this where you want to address your comments, Azu, with, with the civil engineering piece where he went over the drainage?
Yes. I mean, if you want to typically, the board reads my, into record. And then if there are any questions, I will answer those questions or elaborate on my comments. Usually we have Ms. Guarino.
So what we could actually do is Mr. Romulus, can you put Mr. Antonero's letter up? And we can address that because these are all, these are all issues basically related to the engine, the civil engineering, correct?
Correct.
Right. The only, there's only one comment on traffic circulation down on the southeast end of the, of the school property before it goes to the Wally Kruger. Which has to do with the radius, but everything else deals with drainage. Yes.
Okay. Do, is putting it, there are people on the phone that can't see it. So maybe we should read it. Do you mind reading it, Ms. Guarino?
Okay. Let me get to the top of it here. Or. Okay. Hello, Jeff and Jen. I have completed my initial review of the site plan and application for the above subject location. The documents I reviewed include the following. A report titled George H. Mitchell Elementary School Traffic Impact Analysis by Bryant Associates dated February 2019. A report titled The New George H. Mitchell Elementary School 500 South Street, Bridgewater, Mass. 02324 Stormwater Report by Sami Otis Consultants, Inc. And the plan sheets by various team consultants. My review comments at this time are as follows. One, in general, the plans and reports are satisfactorily presented. Two, a plan index sheet should be provided enumerating all of the sheets and sheet content captioned to facilitate review and tracking of the plans. Three, at some point, full size sets of the plan sheets, 24 by 36 inch sheet size should be provided as the small sized sheets are not very legible. Four, the stormwater report in the plans do not include existing conditions watershed plan and the post development conditions watershed plan in their respective sub catchment areas. Therefore, the input for each sub catchment could not be verified slash evaluated. Five, the flow paths and the types of flow assumed in developing the times of concentration should be shown and annotated on the watershed plans. Six, the methodology employed in the stormwater modeling does not account for stormwater flows through the drainage structures, catch basin, catch basins and manholes. Therefore, the effects of potential backwater or surcharging within the structures have not been characterized or identified. The structures should be analyzed slash modeled as detention basins slash ponds with insignificant storage in the stormwater analysis scheme. Seven, the soil evaluation profile slash data documented at the site should be added on the plan with applicable groundwater elevation indicated for each proposed recharge system along with the two year, 10 year and 100 year peak elevations in the respective system bottom elevations indicated on the recharge system details. Eight, a comparison table which summarizes the results of the existing conditions and post development conditions respective peak rates of runoff and volumes of runoff should be provided. Would you slide it up, Azu, please? I mean, Elijah. Nine, concrete strength and dimensional details, including wall thickness for the catch basins and the water quality structure shown on sheet C 62 should be indicated on the plan. 10, the percentage of voids used in the stormwater analysis for infiltration for infiltration system should be 40, not 30. 11, the traffic circulation and parking plan appears adequate. However, school bus route within the school site is not clearly defined on the site plan. The turning radius at the southeasterly intersection for a school bus exiting the school site and traveling easterly towards Bedford Street through the senior center site needs to be evaluated. It does not appear to be adequate. It should be sized to allow for an emergency fire apparatus with ladder to safely negotiate the turn. If you have any questions or need further information, please call or send an email, Azu Antonero, Town Engineer.
I can provide responses to each item if that is preferred.
Good, great.
Elijah, can you scroll up a little bit to back to number one? So one is, that should be fine. A plan index, we can incorporate that into our plans. That's absolutely easy to do. Yes. At some point, we will provide the hard copies. Yes, we can provide a hard set of plans early to mid next week before the conservation commission hearing. So to address any, any of these comments. The stormwater report and showing the watershed plans. I believe that was included in the stormwater report. But we will resend that and provide that as part of the hard copy set as well. The flow paths and times of concentrations are shown on the, 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 the watershed plans for the pre and post. And I can highlight it for you if, if required and we can talk through it, Azu, if we need to. Methodology for stormwater modeling does not account for the stormwater flows through the structures. We can include that in our rational calcinate, calculations and hydrology calculations. That's absolutely fine. The, and we will add the soil evaluations, profiles and data to the plan as requested. A comparison table for the pre and post peak rates, we can add that as well. And number nine is the concrete strength and dimensional details for structures. We will indicate that on the plan as well. Number 10, the percentage of voids, we went with a more conservative number of 30%, but we can go with 40%, absolutely. As for the traffic circulation, we will include signage for specifically for the school bus route. And we utilized a vehicular turning radius software where we illustrate the fire emergent, the fire truck, a ladder truck, a school bus and a typical vehicle going through the site circulation and out to Bedford Street. And what we can do is put that on a separate plan and illustrated and provide it to you as well. In summary, we'll, we will take care of all these comments.
I just have one, one question. I appreciate you that, that all this can be answered. Sounds fairly simply. I'm just questioning, why wasn't it done originally when before it was presented to us?
We just received these comments today.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying, wouldn't, wouldn't you be aware of the fact that much just had to, had to be done?
There were some assumptions on some items. Every city and town has different requirements, different requests. We try to fulfill the needs at the best we can.
Mr. Antonero, do you have any comments? On the response?
No comments. I mean, I believe it was Jeff that was speaking. That he will respond to those. And so we are wait for the response.
We'll have that to you by tomorrow, Azu.
Okay. Not a problem. Actually, I'm off tomorrow. You can submit it, but I'm off until Monday, tomorrow, Friday.
So do you see any of these 11 items resulting in any design changes or not?
This is Jeff again. No, I do not.
Would you agree with that, Mr. Antonero?
Well, I cannot agree with it until I see the response.
Okay. All right. Do we want to, any more board questions or do we want to move on with the presentation? All right, Jean, back to you.
Hey. So there's only two more sections and we'll go fast. If you want to go to the next slide, Elijah. So the exterior lighting, the next slide you'll see is a, a foot candle diagram of the site in. So in general, all the fixtures are high efficiency LED, low glare, full cutoff so that they're dark sky compliant. Any pole fixture that's near the property line is going to have backlight control. There'll be no light spilling onto neighboring properties. You'll see in the diagram is a little bit of spillage onto the street, but that's typical and expected. You want to make sure that the driveways are well lit. The building management system is going to be incredibly flexible. So the timing of lights, which lights are on and off, if they're dimmed, what time all this happens can completely be programmed. And the lighting levels are, are such that they meet all the safety and security requirements from the kind of the industry group. So in the next slide, we've gone through, we've gone through what light fixtures are where. And I have to say, I just, I kind of marked up the drawing so that it'd be a little more legible. The four main lighting fixture types are on the right side of the drawing. The yellow one is kind of the main parking lot lighting. The, the blue one is kind of an ornamental fixture. And I guess what I should say is you can see where they're scattered around the site, you know, with a yellow circle or a blue circle. So the ornamental ones are kind of up near, near the building. The, then there's some building mounted lighting because we have to light exits by code. And the purple dots that you'll see mostly around the backside where the receiving is, but you'll see them in a couple other spaces. Are these are the ones that are outlined in purple. They're, they're downlight. Again, the source of the light won't be visible from any neighboring properties. And then finally around some of the entrances and maybe at the green, at the main entrance, you can see four kind of green dots. We'll have some recessed lighting that just comes down out of a, out of a canopy. The other, the other thing that I'd like to point out is there's a, there's a note in the kind of upper center of the plan that says zero foot candle line. So as you go toward the, anything toward the right is all town property and mostly woods. But you know, there are neighboring properties to the left side and kind of down the page below parking lot number two. So we've shown the property line and you'll see that there's zero, you know, foot candles anywhere off the property except on the far left where it does spill out into South Street, which we think is appropriate. So that's, I think the next slide is going to say pause if there's any questions on exterior lighting. And we can. So the next.
Excuse me, I think there is a chat question.
Chat question.
Yeah, there's, I think Carlton had a question.
Okay, you know, I tried to click on it and I, I don't know, I deleted it. Is it still, can you see it, Elijah?
It reads, why are you not incorporating solar powered LED lights with battery storage?
That was, that was brought up with the, with the district. And based on the electrical engineers' history and other districts, they, they, they just made the district aware that there are many kind of maintenance issues with them. And they've had experience where they've been installed, but other districts are saying, please, you know, they're, they're, they're so finicky and they, they take so much of our maintenance budget that we, we really don't recommend that they, they get installed. So it's, it's not the answer anyone wants to hear who's, who, you know, is in love with solar power and, and you know, we all are too. But it really was, you know, kind of a maintenance issue.
All right. There was, there was another question as well from south and above. Probably to the rest of the area. But it's asking what's, what's being used to pave the parking lot. Is that just?
Is that just going to be regular asphalt?
Jeff, are you...
Yes, correct. That's, we're using a standard bituminous asphalt. Typically, you know, if we were to use pervious asphalt in this location, it takes a significant maintenance, and you cannot use any sand or anything within these parking lots for snore, snow. After it's snow, you can't use any sands, or you have to have multiple cleanings throughout the year to have it stay effective for stormwater management.
But, and then Jeff, am I wrong, or, I mean, you're capturing all the surface water on this impervious surface and then getting it into...
Into infiltration.
Infiltration system, so you're kind of, are you kind of accomplishing the same thing in different ways?
Correct. It's being recharged through the infiltration units, and it's, we believe it's a much easier way of maintaining the system at localized structures.
Moving on, Gene?
Oh, I think, so we have two more slides. The building committee is, what you're looking at now is what we submitted to you, and that had, this is just in regard to massing, which I had touched upon at the beginning, you know, the two-story massing facing South Street, and then as the site drops off in the upper right here, you can see that there's at the ground floor level, and the playground is all the greens and purples that Chris and Dustin were talking about as the site drops off by 14 feet. So, the exterior materials are going to be, for the most part, brick. Some of the yellow highlights that, you know, we've been tossing around would be a cementitious panel, painted panel, which is a low-maintenance product. And, you know, we feel like we've done a pretty successful job in mitigating the mass of the building, especially on the, you know, the two views on the left side when you're coming into the site, or you're looking into the site from South Street. It really looks, you know, pretty much like a two-story building, and, you know, that's important to us, not only for the neighborhood, but just to scale the building down for, you know, the young learners. The next slide and last slide is, and what I wanted to say is that the building committee has a subcommittee who we're working with on interior design and exterior, I guess, finishes or colors, you know, to lack of a better phrase. So, you know, we're not coming in saying the building's definitely going to be the same color as you saw on the previous slide, or in the lower right here, this, you know, kind of a taupe-colored brick. You know, it maybe, it might end up, you know, being a red brick or some other, you know, kind of shade, but the idea is that the massing is not going to change. And I think that's, you know, that's kind of the end of our presentation.
Okay, any more board comments?
Is there a dumpster outside our chairs?
There will be, and it'll be at the back. And I, maybe if we go back two slides, or even one slide, Elijah? No, one more slide back, sorry. On the lower right, this is the, I guess what I call the, well, it's the north side of the school. It's the opposite side of the front entrance, and on the lowest level, you can see kind of a couple rectangular pads, and that's where there's going to be, you know, dumpster, the transformer for the building, the generator, and some parking for custodial staff.
I don't know if it'll be fenced in?
I believe the dumpster is fenced in, but I'm going to, I'm not sure.
Generator, the generator stuff, I would just assume you're going to have bollards around, and I just want to make sure the dumpster is actually...
Yeah.
And what do you, have you proposed what you're doing for fencing, get around the playgrounds?
I'm going to let Chris and Dustin talk about that, but yes, we did have a, we did have a conversation with the school building committee. I don't know if there's any photos or pictures available, but... Dustin, you still here?
Yeah, I don't have anything at this time in terms of what's going around the dumpster. Perhaps Jeff could explain any better. Sorry, dog. Yeah, I don't have anything right now. I think Chris hopped off, but we can provide something if...
But around the playgrounds, we were talking about a metal fence, right? I'm going to say picket fence, but I know that's probably not the right term.
Uh, yeah, it's an ornamental picket.
Can you just go back to the site plan for a second? I'm just looking at the playgrounds in proportion where the drive aisles are.
Oh, okay.
You know, as a...
It's a larger file, so it may be a little long.
I will say that one of the things we try to do, Steve, is not have a traffic aisle that's perpendicular, you know, to a playground. So you'll notice when we get there that the, you know, the two-way drive is kind of parallel with the playground on really all three sides of it.
All right. All right, you can go back to Elijah to two of them before, one more. So that'll basically show there's a drive aisle, and this is where they, and then they go around the parking area, you know. I'm just, you know, freaky things do happen with cars. Has there been any consideration of, you know, how you hop in the curb, going into the playground? Any type of bollards put in, maybe fence that can stop autos, just putting it out there?
At this time, no. You know, no, you know. So in our mind, we were, we were careful to have the drive aisles, like I said, kind of perpendicular to the fence, I mean, parallel with the fence. And the fences, you know, ornamental pickets, so I'm not sure that it's rated to stop a vehicle.
Probably not, but...
Yeah.
All right.
Would, Gene, would it make sense to put some bollards, I mean, could a car come over that wall into the playground?
You know, as Steve said, a freak thing can always happen, Patrick. I would say that you'd need a ton of bollards, and it would not be, it would not be a cheap thing.
I would, and I'm not looking to add cost to your project. You know, I do know that they make fences with a wire cable that goes through it, also black ornamental to stop cars from going through. It's just a precautionary measure that I'm looking for to keep the kids safe.
Well, I'm sure Dustin's group could do some research on that and provide the school building committee with, you know, some options with associated costs.
Yep, we certainly can. We do have some bollards proposed at the front entrance.
I think that's a good point, just to make sure that no cars kind of, just something we should look at, Gene, maybe in the school building committee side.
Yeah, because I, you know, I've done plenty of playgrounds where the walkway is, you know, parallel to the playground, and freak things do happen. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Any other questions or comments for Gene or his team?
Yeah.
I just have one more.
Go ahead.
Back to the solar. I know you have the building solar-ready, but is it less expensive to put the solar panels up at construction than maybe later on?
Gene, I don't want to speak for you or the committee, but wasn't the idea, if we put it on now, we'd have to pay for it outright, where once we, once the school district of the town takes the building, we could look at leasing options?
Yeah, look at leasing, you could look at grants, you could look at all sorts of things, and Patrick, you're correct.
We did, we did price it out, Gene, as an option, and it was, and I don't, don't hold me to it, but Gene was in the millions, wasn't it?
It was, it was really significant, and that's why it kind of dropped off. And then, I mean, like I say, we looked at roof-mounted, ground-mounted, and...
But it is, it is ready with all the conduit and everything right to the electrical room, and then we could lease the roof out.
That is, that is correct. I mean, I will say, the district secured a grant from, I think it's Engrid here, but I apologize if it's not, to wire, I think, four spaces for electrical car recharging.
Gene and Shane, we've applied for that, we haven't received it.
Oh, thank you, Shane, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and...
Yeah, just going back to the traffic again, the exiting onto 18, we didn't really, just give us the rationale for not exiting onto South Street?
Yeah, it was, it was really, it was really to stop the kind of conflict points on the site where you have cars, you know, kind of trying to take a turn while buses are exiting or vice versa. So we really wanted to create two completely separate routes, you know, through the site so that the queue could keep moving, and that there was really very little kind of turning or crossing traffic on the site. I mean, it's really, you know, it came up over and over again that, you know, really, you're building a school, these are, there's a lot of parents, I think in the afternoon, 250 parents are coming in, parking their cars and draw, and walking into the lobby to pick up their kids. And, you know, the primary interest of the district, and then also the public safety, was trying to make the site, the school site, as safe as possible.
I've been involved in drop-off and pickup at the old high school, Mitchell Elementary. Yes, I think the buses and the cars need to be separate.
We did have a public chat come through, it just says, where would the children, this is from Carol again, where would the children exit the building to the playground in relation to the parking lots, the driveways? They would come into that playground right from the building, correct?
Yeah, you can leave this slide up. I think Dustin had touched on it. We tried to place, well, we did, we placed the playgrounds right next to the building. At the existing site, there's actually a pre-K playground that you got across the main entrance drive, which, you know, is obviously not what we want to see. So on this, on this plan toward the right side, there's a bump out that kind of has an angle to it, and that's the cafeteria. So the way recess works is, they bring a grade level down to the cafeteria, it's 250 kids, and after eating, they would exit from the cafeteria, from that little bump out right into this play area. And then, the area on the far right where you see the kind of hashtags or the crisscrosses, that actually is asphalt. It's the bus drive when arrival and dismissal is happening, but during the day, it's gated off, and it's a play area. So the kids would go from this playground around the right side of the building and into the door on the right end of the building. Probably too much detail, but it was really well thought out, how the kids come out of cafeteria, play, go back into the building a different way, and meanwhile, the next group of kids are coming down into the cafeteria and not onto the playground.
Any other, I guess, board or public comments at this point?
Yeah, I recall, due to the wet nature of the site itself, when the existing building was new, there was a, there was a big issue with moisture and mold, the existing building? Is that being, the precautions being taken to prevent that in the new building?
Yeah, this is Gene again, but this, you know, that was a major, major, major issue, obviously, for the town, almost from the day it opened, and for this building committee, it will, well, first of all, there was a big forensic study done on, you know, kind of what the problems were with the old building, and it really had nothing to do with groundwater or the wetlands near the building. It was all about the building trapping moisture inside of it because there was some construction issues with the exterior walls, and the moisture that came in couldn't get back out, so it was being sucked into the building. So, but again, this committee did an incredible amount of due diligence, and when we were studying all the soils out here, it was beautiful, free-flowing gravel, there was no evidence of groundwater anywhere near where the floor slabs are going to be in this building. So, you know, we very confidently can say that there will not be any mold or moisture issues inside this building.
And the other thing, Gene, too, is, there's no, there's really nothing below ground level in this building anymore, right? It's all the, I mean, there's one little section maybe in the transition that's covered with dirt, but every, everything's ground level, correct?
Yeah, there is some part of the gymnasium wall facing this playground, you know, the ground does slope up, that 14-foot slope. But again, you know, we've buried, we've buried schools into hillsides, and you just, you treat the foundation with a rubber waterproofing membrane, you provide a path for the water to go once it hits it, and again, just groundwater is not an issue here, nor will surface water be.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Did we address all the chats?
There's one left from Carol that says the slide that we were showing regarding the playground was not showing what was stated. Not exactly sure what that's in relation to.
So the playground slide is up right now, if anyone wants to try to clarify that.
I think that's when you were talking about the gates that can open and close and...
Oh.
If you turn the bus, turn the bus, when the buses aren't there.
Yeah, you can see one of the gates in the far lower right-hand corner, you know, it looks like a triangle, yeah, kind of right there, and then there's another one up off the page, kind of over where the maintenance area is.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, the only outstanding issues, I think, in talking to staff is the comments that Mr. Dantoneira made, is that correct?
Yes. So, the comments that Mr. Dantoneira made, also Ray had asked about the tree types as it relates to being air-resistant. Carlton made a comment about the shading.
So my question is, though, is this, do we want to consider closing the public hearing, or do we want to wait and continue at the next meeting, just so Azu's comments can be addressed?
I would feel comfortable with keeping the public hearing open until Azu's comments are addressed.
Okay, and we could just, I don't think it's a heavy lift, and I don't think it would be a long... Yeah, and we could just, I don't think it's a heavy lift and I don't think it would be a long, a long meeting. If, if just, Shane or Gene, that doesn't affect project timing or anything? If we continue it for one more meeting, just to confirm the town engineers' comments are addressed?
Um, they, I don't think so, to, in two weeks' time, Pat.
It would be two weeks out, I guess, sir.
No, that won't affect our schedule.
It would not or would?
It would, would not. Well, I, I, I don't believe so, Gene. I don't know for you or consultants, but certainly for MSBA and, uh, any building committee, uh, approvals, it won't affect that. I'm not sure, Gene, what it, what it might do to your consultants.
Yeah, no, no, we're totally fine. I think, I think Jeff will have the answers done tomorrow and, um, you know, we'll just, two weeks is not, not going to impact us.
Yep. Tomorrow.
Okay, and that's really the only outstanding issue. And then, um, Mr. Jamien, do you want feedback on the trees, your tree question?
Yes.
Will some, will someone issue us, uh, I, I don't know, an email or something, just, uh, saying what the, what the specific question is about, just so we make sure we answer it about the trees?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll continue, get a motion to continue the public hearing just for the purposes of, um, confirming that Azu's questions are addressed and Ray's question is, uh, addressed as well.
Um, does it, just, uh, procedurally, what if somebody has another question that comes up between now and next meeting? Are you saying that nobody can ask another?
Oh, no, no, I'm just, I, I don't think we need to go through the whole presentation again next meeting.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just saying some other question may crop up either from somebody.
Oh, yeah, 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 we're keeping the public hearing open, but I, I think the rea- I think the reason is we're not closing the public hearing tonight, uh, be, uh, because we have these questions. And, and that's what we should address at the next meeting. If something else comes up, something else comes up.
I, I would just suggest that if a board member has a question and they thought of after the meeting, if they want to let Elijah know that he can forward it to the consultants and that they're prepared to answer it at the next meeting.
Right, yeah, that'd be good.
I'll make a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing until the, uh, July 15th meeting.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Zach, Mike?
Yep.
All right, so, uh, Michael?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, and I'm a S, okay.
Great. So, if, any questions that we want answered, if we get them to, uh, Elijah? That'd be great. All right, good. All right, Gene, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you again for, uh, having this meeting. We appreciate it.
All right, and then, um, do we have, I, I didn't see them in the packet, but do we have minutes from six seventeen in, in our packet?
Um, I sent it, it should have been in the, there was a Dropbox link with, um.
Oh, yeah, all right, yeah, all right. I, I didn't print that out and I looked at it and printed it out, okay. So I didn't review them, but if other people didn't, we want to vote on them, we could, we could do that.
I didn't read them.
Does anybody want to make a motion or we just want to kick that to the next meeting as well?
Next meeting.
Good. Any board committee liaison reports, directors reports, anything like that?
Uh, no, none of mine.
CPC is working on, um, evaluating the application by the congregational church for some money.
July 15th, is this the only thing that'll be on?
I believe that's correct.
You believe it is or not?
I believe it's the only thing on for July 15th.
Okay.
Today.
Okay. So unless people want to stay on, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I apologize, it's obviously since I was late, I must have missed it. Uh, what happened with the other two public meetings? Were those, uh, taking out a turn or really just, uh?
Yeah, yeah, so we, the zoning ordinance was, um, pulled by the councils, so that's going to come back to us in a different form at some point, so we just closed the public hearing. Um, Firefly Line, we released one lot, um, with the condition that it's a model home and he needs an accu-, he needs, um, a bond placed before an occupancy is given. And the Form A was, uh, just the change of a lot line that we approved.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Did we have a motion, uh, do we have a motion on a second? I'm sorry.
I had a motion.
I'll second it.
So Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Jamien?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
And I'm a S, so happy Fourth of July, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Don't go to any gatherings.